Well, anyway, good evening. Charlie, you all set? Good evening. On behalf of the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee, I want to welcome all of you to the second committee-sponsored pre-Town Meeting Forum. By way of introduction, my name is Reno Delusio. I'm chairman of the committee. Sitting on my left is Bat Lawless, who's the vice chair, and Michael Bontempo, who's the committee clerk. Also, several committee members are here to provide assistance with handouts and the microphones located on either aisle. Before we get started, please raise your hand if you need a hearing assist device, which are on this table. Is anyone near the hearing assist device? Seeing none. Then please raise your hand if you need a copy of the Agenda Ground Rule Sheet and the Pink Forum questionnaire. I have a couple of notes on the agenda. The order of articles that were going to be addressed tonight is the Agenda number, not the article number. And we have something new at this forum that we didn't have at the October in that the budget is being introduced at this forum format. Regarding the ground rules, as a reminder, the primary purpose of this forum is to be able to ask questions, which is not so easy to do at Town Meeting. So please try to avoid advocating for or against the article. That debate is properly reserved for the Town Meeting. As a clarification, since the person presenting the article may not be the sponsor, please address your questions to the presenter. The remainder of the ground rules is pretty straightforward. Line up behind one of the two microphones in the aisle. Identify yourself and ask your question. If the question is unsatisfactory, ask a follow-up. If another question is required, please proceed to the back of the line and avoid repetitive questions. The committee would be remiss if it did not extend its appreciation to the Town Administrator Richard Vilani and the various department personnel for their cooperation and attendance this evening in support of this forum. Finally, it would be appreciated if we would fill out the forum questionnaire before you leave and drop it in the box on the table as you leave the room. It is now my privilege to turn the proceedings over to our Town Moderator, Attorney Michael Nowfree, who has graciously agreed to chair this forum. Mike?
Thank you, Reno. Starting with Agenda Item 1, which is Article 11, the increasing the Board of Selectmen from three to five members. I'll call upon the presenter, Michael Soares. I do have a timer, three minutes, so I'll... I think I know how to work it.
Do you want me to summarize it or just read the article?
No, you don't. Just... You want to present it, tell us what the article is about.
So basically, this article, in effect, will begin the process to change the number of selectmen from three members today to five members. If approved at Town Meeting, it would then go to a town-wide vote, presumably April of next year, if we don't change the election date. And then, if successful there, we would elect two additional selectmen at the April 2021 election. That pretty much sums it up.
Questions, if you want to line up for questions on my left or in my right. And we'll start the questioning on any questions you have about the article. Kate Mustriani?
A quick question. So traditionally, there's been one selectman position up every year. So is it going to be 1-1-3? How are we going to space out the election process?
It... Thanks for the question. It does get spaced out, so that it's 2-2-1. So very much like the school committee is 2-2-3. There's always going to be that one year where there's one more or one fewer. So if you read the details up here, one person will be elected for a three-year term and one of the selectmen for a two-year term. Therefore, it'll start the process of expiring 2-2-1.
Question over here.
Tom Russ, Precinct 2. In the event you don't have a sufficient number of people interested in the position and say only four people end up running for the board, how are you going to solve that quandary? What's your plan there?
Honestly, I had not considered that possibility. I would have to discuss that with Town Council to see what legally would occur if that would happen.
I think there's a simple answer to the question. If it's on the ballot to elect selectmen and there's nobody running, then it's a write-in. Whoever writes the name in, you get elected selectman.
Do you think that would work?
Oh, that's the way it's worked. Years ago, we used to elect three selectmen for one-year term. That's when I first served on the board some 50 years ago. We had three people running for a one-year term. Then we changed it from a three-year term focusing on one selectman. Now, in fact, in the early '70s, there was a charter commission that recommended increasing the Board of Selectmen from three members to five members. And that charter commission proposal was defeated by vote back in the early '70s. So it's a little historical background on the article.
So then we'd go to the highest write-in candidate?
Okay, right here.
Next question, yes.
Christine Crane, Precinct 6. What's the reason you want to increase it to five? What do you hope to accomplish with that?
So I had some notes here. So a couple of things. First off, we're the largest community that only has three selectmen. Usually, once you reach a certain size, there's a lot of reasons why you would want to switch to five members. It allows for... First of all, I think it makes the board more diverse. I think it encourages minorities and women to put their names out there because it's not seen as a direct challenge to an incumbent. Rather, you're presenting yourself as a candidate and what you have to offer. You're not trying to take down an incumbent. So I think that's my main motivation for doing this is why... The main reason why I want to do this. There's other reasons. For instance, it reduces the possibility of a conflict of interest stalemate. So right now, you know, selectmen can have family members that work for certain town departments. And if that's the case, they have to recuse themselves whenever dealing with that department. And that creates a possibility of a stalemate or like a one-on-one stalemate. Or even, they might not even be able to conduct business at all if one of the other selectmen are absent that day. Or if, say, two selectmen had the same conflict of interest, they wouldn't be able to conduct business regarding that department. So there are other reasons. You reduce open meeting law conflicts. So right now, because there's three selectmen, any discussion between two selectmen would constitute a quorum. And if it's not a posted meeting, then they would technically be breaking the law for anything... Any discussion that could be just casual. So those are the basic reasons why. I know there's currently some conflict going on right now, and that's not my motivation. I want to make that clear, that I... You know, this isn't about any sort of current political issue going on in town. This is a long-term change that I think is right for Milford.
Any other questions? If not, why don't we move on to the next article?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next one is the changing of the Town Election to November. And recognize Brian Cole to present the article.
All right. Good evening. My name is Brian Cole. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a Town Meeting member in Precinct 8. I have... I was named co-chair of the Election Working Group back in 2017. I'm going to go, in as much time as I have, through sort of the motivation, why I'm doing this, and then a little bit on how it would work, and at which time I'll take your questions. So the first thing to consider is the fact that... Oh, it didn't work. That's a shame. There we go. As many of you know, the turnout in this spring's Town Election was very poor. In all, 13% of the town voted. This is unusual. It's the lowest turnout we've had since 2011. But at the same time, it's not that unusual. Milford hasn't cracked 30% turnout since 1999. And you can see there's a consistent downward trend ever since we moved the election date to April in 1977. There are... So obviously, this is not just a Milford problem, right? Lots of other towns have issues with turnout. And so we can look to other towns to see what they have tried. And some have tried moving the election to Saturday or to other months in the spring. Some have tried increased advertising, increased voter outreach. Some have held voter festivals on the same day, at the same time, at the election to try and boost turnout. But all of these things, in addition to costing more money, only have a couple of percentage point... Make a couple of percentage points difference. Excuse me. What I am proposing is to move the Town Election to November, concurrent, bless you, with the state and federal election. On average, the turnout in the Town Elections has been around 20%. In midterm elections, in state elections, it has been over 50%. The most recent presidential election, it was about 75, 76%. At the same time, moving the election would... Moving two elections to the same date would save the town a little bit of money. We would not have to pay for an extra police detail. We would also get, at the same time, having the state election and Town Elections at the same time would allow us to offer early voting, according to state law, and would allow us to expand the voting hours a little from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Let me skip ahead to how it would work. This is an example... This is a diagram showing the current election calendar. Is that three minutes?
That's three minutes. So I'll give you another... I'll give you another minute.
All right. It is not in the article that was... The warrant that was mailed out to you, but I have worked with Town Council to add an amendment that would specify that the first election where this would take place would be in November 2020 to replace the election currently scheduled for April 2021. So the blue box... The blue boxes in April there represent where the Town Elections are currently being held. The A, B, and C represent the selectmen who would be elected in those years. A would be Selectman Walsh, B would be Selectman Buckley, and C would be Selectman Kincaid. If this passes, as written, this would be the new election calendar. You see that we would move that April 2021 back to November 2020, and so on. That is all the time I have. Thank you very much for your patience, and I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Will we line up for questions behind the microphone on the other side? Dr. Heller?
Yes, Dr. Heller, Precinct 1, also on the Town Hall Study Committee. Glad to see everybody here tonight and wish there were more. Have a question. I looked at your figures. It's my understanding from talking with our Town Clerk that... And you have figures for $900 for printing costs. My understanding is that even though it's one election, if you had them combined, they have to be separate ballots. The town has to have a separate ballot from the state. So you have initially $900 on both. If you're doing double printing, that's going to be more than 900. And also, I suspect it applies, miscellaneous costs are also going to go up. So again, I think that we have some problems here with that. And the other thing is, November, except for the spring, usually April is a much better month. We all got washed away this year, but that's unusual. Don't anticipate. But I think that weather-wise, has a lot to do with people turnout. And there's just a lack of interest in people, whether it's in the national state or even local government. So... And I don't care what... When you change the election, that's going to be a problem.
So let me address those points. I did a bad job of explaining this slide, for one thing. This slide is based on the fiscal year 2019, after conversations with the Town Clerk, Amy Hennessy Neves. We had three... This includes all three elections. So that's the state primary in September, the state election in November, and the Town Election in April. So the $900 there does include both the... Where did he go? The $900 there does include both the state ballot and the Town ballot. You are correct in that there is something of a logistical hurdle. We cannot just... You do have to have two sets of ballots. You do have to have two sets of people checking people in and so forth. Technically, you have different groups of people that can vote. Certain people can vote in one election, not another. But to my understanding, this is running a second election on the same day. It is not an insurmountable obstacle. Certainly, the technology we have, the voting machines that we have, can all handle this. Now, as to your second point about the weather. The first... According to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, I looked up their average temperatures from 1981 through 2010. For the first week of April, the average high is 51. The average low is 37. For the first week of November, the average high is 55. The average low is 41. Thank you.
George?
Hi, George Swarmer, Precinct 7.
How you doing, George?
My concern about this realignment is that the importance of Milford's issues would be minimized on a statewide or a national ballot. I like the idea of focusing on an election which is solely and exclusively Town Issues. People that are very, very concerned about Town Issues will show up. They will vote. And I think they put a more critical emphasis on those issues than putting them as an "oh, by the way," secondary ballot or another reason to show up when the president's there. So I'm very concerned that it kind of minimizes how important the Town of Milford is and those issues that face the Town of Milford, if you bury them in with President Trump and President whatever and that. So I'm very concerned about that.
That's a fair point. I will say this. The... As an added benefit to moving the election to November, the campaign season moves from late winter to end of summer, early fall. And so it'll encourage candidates for selectmen, for school committees, so on, to go out, knock on doors, and to connect with voters. And look, I've tried to knock on doors in February, March. It's terrible. It's not fun. You don't want to be there, and the voter doesn't want to answer the door. This will allow, by moving the campaign season to better weather, frankly, you'll allow... You'll encourage more voter outreach efforts. And I think you'll do... You'll see candidates better connecting with the voters and better making their case.
Yes, sir. Question.
Donna Nero, Precinct 8. A couple of concerns, Brian. One of them being staffing for Amy. How has Amy addressed that conversation? Or have you had that conversation with her? It's my understanding that she has a challenge getting people to man the tables as it is now. So needing two sets of checkers, how is that going to impact things? And then also the confusion with having two different ballots?
Confusion how?
Voters will have to check in, check out, obtain one ballot, go to another table, check in, check out. How effective is that going to be? And what kind of confusion is that going to cause?
Sure. I think that's a... That second question is something that we're going to have a hard time... I'm not going to speculate on that. That's a fair concern. As to the first question, I think... I did have that conversation with the Town Clerk. We talked about this. And she told me that we have to run two elections either way, whether it's April and November, or November and also November. And so from her perspective, it does not make that much of a difference. Although I agree with you that the staffing could be a potential logistical concern.
Kate?
Having worked precincts for the elections, I have to say that it is very frustrating to see the very low turnout for Town Elections. So anything that would increase the turnout would be exciting. On the other hand, I do have a couple of questions because we now have new voting machines. And I understand, if I understood the description when they were introduced, that the ballots are coded. So if we had both a state ballot and a Town ballot that were being fed in at the same time, would our machines be able to tabulate them separately and produce two separate tallies at the end of the night? Is that the way it would work? Can I ask whoever would answer that?
I did ask the Town Clerk that, and the answer is yes. But I'll let her answer.
Hello, everybody. Just to clarify a few things. Yes, it is possible to hold two elections on one day. Yes, it's going to be a challenge. Yes, there will be two sets of ballots. There's going to need to be two separate tables for check-in and check-out for both separate ballots. There will be, hopefully, a little less police detail needed where it's only one occasion that the election is running. So the other thing you mentioned is that the coding for both ballots can be done on one card. So that is not going to be an issue. The amount of ballots that will be held in our new ballot boxes will not be an issue. They can more than hold the amount of ballots that will be run through the machine. So that will not be an issue. There will be confusion. There'll probably be some frustration with voters having to check in and check out at two separate places, two separate times. And it also does not guarantee that people who want to vote for the state election will also choose to vote the Town ballot. So that will also be a challenge. Are there any other questions?
I didn't actually clarify. When you were saying about two separate check-ins and check-outs, would you have to check in, do a ballot, check out, go to a second place? Or could you check in for both?
No, I believe probably the easiest way to do it is set up those check-in people all at one table. And you would have to go from one set of books for the state election, one set of books for this Town Election, and then do the same at the checkout process. And then also, we would have to keep in mind that the new machines, though they are fantastic, they are just slightly a bit slower to read your ballot. They take seven seconds to read your ballot. So for one person to stand there for 14 seconds to make sure that both of their ballots are read, there will be lines. There will be frustration. But again, it is possible. And that's all up to the voters.
Question over here.
Andrew Johansson, Precinct 4. I've read about the proposal to move Town Elections to November. And I've both studied the proposal and Town Warrant. And one of my concerns is, and just in terms of state and national politics, I've been involved with many elections over the years. And more and more, there are very fierce partisan interests on both sides that are driving those election processes. Yet locally, Town Elections in Milford, that traditionally has been focused like on the interest of the Town of Milford. And it really hasn't been about those partisan interests that, let's all face it, is increasingly about a lot of the state and national elections. And my concern is that if we move Town Elections to November, those fierce partisan interest in battles are now going to bleed over, you know, into Town politics. And I don't know. I'm just concerned that it does more harm than good, looking at it that way.
Okay. Just to review the ground rules again. Try to ask questions and not advocate for or against the proposal, if we can try to focus on that, okay?
To Mr. Johansson's point, though, I will say that I have no intention and no interest in changing the nonpartisan nature of the Town Elections.
Yes.
Chris Crane again, Precinct 6. Well, change is going to be hard for everybody, but it's a quick learn. Any other towns that have November elections, are you aware of maybe the percentages or how high the turnout? Because that's the ultimate key, right? Is to get more people to get out and vote. So we have more than 13% that are going to be voting in, people that are going to run this town.
Sure. This is a chart of turnout in local elections in 2017 and 2018. This is from the 150 towns and cities across Massachusetts with at least 13,000 residents. Good cutoff as an Yeller. On the right... The two bars on the right there are November 2017 and November 2018, respectively. In total, 56 cities and towns currently hold their elections in November, including one town that holds representative... That works under a representative Town Meeting structure, the Town of Sagis. Their average turnout in November 2017, which, again, an off-year, no election to piggyback off of, was 25%.
Question.
Hi, thank you, Brian, for doing this. My name is Brendan Ricker. I am a new Town Meeting member.
Welcome.
Thank you. My... Two quick questions. First, with that $3,000 that we are saving, will there be extra money available to explain the two-format check-in process? So like a campaign that goes out, like maybe a mailer?
Some sort of mailer.
Something along those lines, to explain that you have to check in twice if you want to vote for both, you know, both elections?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. And the second thing would be, do you think 13% is a reflection of a true democratic process?
Of course not, or I wouldn't be presenting this. Thank you.
I... Oh. You're good.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
254 people voted in Hope Deal yesterday in their election. 245? 245 people. There was one contest. I think what draws people to the polls is people running for office. And we don't have people that want to get involved in Town Government anymore by running for office. I think back in the '70s, we would have... Look at the old newspapers, and you'd see the number of candidates that would be running in the turnouts were 60, 70% back in the '70s. I mean, it's just remarkable that there's just not the interest. We've got to get young people more involved and running for office so that their families will get out there and support them and go to the polls.
Those young people.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, was it 400? 400. I thought the Milford Daily News can't be depended upon. All right.
Donna Nero, Precinct 8. So question, Brian, just for clarity. Is this slide representing municipalities that are having single combined elections? Or is this all municipalities with residents with at least 13,000 residents?
This is all municipalities with at least 13,000 residents.
So some of these municipalities represent both Town... So this is only for local elections in those municipalities?
Only for local elections in these municipalities. The local elections that were held concurrently with a state or federal election, or well, the state election, would be the November 2018 bar, all the way on the right.
But we also have the November 17 bar, correct?
I think we would throw a party if we got 25% turnout. But yes, that's correct. That is the off-year. I will say, to Amy's point about not everybody who shows up will take a Town ballot, that's true. It tends to be the turnout in the state ballots in those towns tends to be about five percentage points higher than what's listed here. And one last point to what you were saying earlier about the young people. I got the statistics from the most recent election. 18-year-olds voted at an 18% clip this year. Yes? 18-year-olds voted at an 18% clip this year. That's higher than... That's three percentage points higher than any other age group under the age of 60. So some of them voted.
Yes, another question.
Hi, my name's Ryan Newfell. I'm newly elected Town Meeting member for Precinct 2.
Welcome.
Thank you. The question, what was the original motivation behind moving the Town Election to April? It was mentioned it was moved in the '70s?
Yes. So as best as I can... As best as I could tell from digging through the annual Town Reports, the election was originally held in March, back when we moved to the representative Town Meeting system in the 20s or '70s. representative town meeting system in the 20s or 30s or whatever. An early March election, there's bad weather and the turnout was not great. So to improve on that, we moved to the first week of May. After a year or two of that, what happened was, back in the day, town meeting was not just one night, it was a couple of weeks. And we were getting close to the end of the fiscal year without a budget. So rather than sweat that out every year, the town decided in 19, beginning in 1977, to hold the elections in that first week of April instead. We actually moved the election from the first Monday in April to the first Tuesday in April in 2002, early 2000s. How'd I do?
Good.
Thank you.
Good. In March of, in March, we used to have the election. I stood outside, I ran for a town meeting seat. I stood outside in the cold, passed out a pamphlet why I wanted to be a town meeting member, and I lost. Okay? So that was in March, it was terrible weather. We thought by moving to the, moving up a couple of months, Reno served back in the 70s also as a selectman, he can attest to that. So, you know, it's good to have the good weather and hopefully look it out and vote. Anyway, one more question.
Hi, Chuck Clark from Precinct One.
Hi.
My question, I guess, is going to be to Amy. Since we do early voting, are we going to get two separate envelopes?
Yes, for the years that early voting is going to be available, which will be every other year, early voting will be available for the town election also. And yes, there will be two separate envelopes, two separate ballots for that.
To be clear, is that early voting or absentee voting?
And one more envelope for absentee also.
Sorry, what?
Yes, George.
Last question, none of this affects the need for a special town meeting? Our town election? Where a town, the townwide election is required to resolve a certain major issue. None of this affects that?
No, it wouldn't affect.
George, this is not to, I will echo what the previous speaker said. This is not to, this is not in response to any particular policy. This is not in response to any particular candidates or any particular elections.
But we would still have to have a special town election if a special major issue confronts the town.
Yes, I can answer that, George. Okay, let's move on because it's after 7:30 if we want to cover all of these agenda items. Let's move on to...
Thank you all for your time.
Okay, Agenda Item Three, which is the Milford Water Company Purchase Fees, presented by Zachary Taylor. Philani, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Good evening, everybody. This article seeks $285,000 to supplement the original budget in order to purchase the water company. I'm not going to go over the history, but I will tell you, we are in the final stages. In fact, evidentiary hearings began this Monday. They will go through next Monday, May 20. At that point in August, briefs and reply briefs are due. And then we are hopeful for a decision by the end of this year from the DPU, the Department of Public Utilities. Again, the article seeks $285,000 to supplement the budget. Why do we need to supplement the budget? Number of factors. One, we have unanticipated litigation costs. Two, we needed to hire a property appraisal expert. And unfortunately, there was a more expansive filing by the Milford Water Company, including five additional witnesses that require additional resources. One issue that was litigated upfront in this was the issue of the process to determine the valuation standard. So what is the DPU going to use? The water company presented this issue very early. We need additional witnesses as part of the evidentiary hearing. The water company vigorously contested the valuation of the actual assets. They have valuation excess of 150 million, and we have it around 43 million as far as the value of the assets. Also, there is some dispute over the value of the real estate involved. Their valuation is much, much higher than what we have. So again, we needed to hire an additional expert to rebut the company's real estate appraisal. They have increased witnesses that are going to require our experts to rebut those witnesses. So unfortunately, with litigation, you can't predict a specific cost or a specific total expense, and therefore, that's the need at this point. We are in the home stretch. But again, this is crucial to finally finishing this process so that the DPU can assess the value. And do remember, the town, we have like an option. So if we don't like the value, if we do not think we can do it, if the financial team figures that we cannot afford to buy it at the DPU price, we can walk away. The water company does not have that same option. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions? Yes.
Chris Crane again, 16, I mean, six, whatever. I know it may be hard to answer. Do we have any idea of how much further this process is going to take and what's...
We expect a DPU decision on the valuation by the end of this year. So let's assume one of two options. One, we can't afford it, that would end it. Let's say we determine we can afford it, then the, there would be some additional work to do just to put the transaction in place. So by the end of the year, we should have a decision by early, hopefully in February or so, we'll know whether or not we're going to own a water company.
Any other questions? Brian?
Brian Cold, Precinct Eight. Two-part question. First, what, as you say, we are in the home stretch, but it's still going to be a while before...
True.
Yes, okay. Until then, what can, what are we as a town doing to protect the quality of our water? And second of all, the water commissioners that we appointed recently, what, if anything, can they do or are they doing to prepare for whipping the water company into shape, assuming we acquire it?
Interesting question. We can't do anything right now to monitor the water quality. It is still independently and privately owned by the Milford Water Company. The water commissioners are in place. We've put together the employee structure and pay scale. That is in place, if you remember at former town meetings. But that's where we are. We do monitor things. In fact, today I got notice that they're going to be dealing with the tank on Highland Street. The fire department is involved to make sure that everything is done properly, and we'll monitor what work is being done. So we do get notified when and if they are doing something from an infrastructure level, and then we send the appropriate department to monitor. But right now, that's all we can pretty much do.
Any other questions? Let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the Surviving Spouse Health Insurance.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Capice. I'm the Town's Benefit Coordinator, and I'm presenting Article 12 on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the Insurance Advisory Committee. Basically, what this article would do is adopt a section of the Mass General laws that would allow the town to continue contributing towards a surviving spouse or an employee, surviving employee's health insurance. Currently, if a retiree or an employee predeceases their spouse, it's covered under the town's health insurance, the spouse can stay on the plan, but they pay 100% of the premium. And this would change that. Actually, if it passes at town meeting, it would go to the ballot, assuming April or next November, whenever the election would be. And that's pretty much in a nutshell.
Questions?
The surviving spouse, is that a family plan?
In the majority of the cases that I've seen, it's been people over the age of 65, Medicare-eligible and on supplement plans. We have had one or two in the past, maybe 10 years that I can think of, that predis, you know, somebody passed away prior to becoming Medicare-eligible.
And what about if the surviving spouse remarries?
Then this would, they would not be allowed to stay on the plan if they remarried. Under the Mass General law, yes.
Okay, they couldn't buy a plan and pay the whole thing either?
I would have to check the town council. If we adopted that section of the law, I think it like overrides what we do now, so...
Any other questions? Yes.
Chuck Clark, Precinct One. This is a new program, I believe, isn't it? We haven't done this before.
No, we have not, since, since I've been dealing with employees' health benefits.
All right, is this just during the current year, or does this continue?
If it gets passed at town meeting and is approved at the, on the ballot as a question, then it would just go, be going forward from that point on.
No, I mean, would the coverage continue the following year?
Yes, yes.
It would?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Dr. Heller again. Do you have a figure as to what this would cost and how many people it would affect?
Difficult to project going forward, but to implement it with today's numbers, I believe there's 20 individuals, and it would be an approximate cost of $32,000 on implementation.
Any other questions? Yes, we know. Yes.
Okay, look at, when we mailed the warrant, you got speaking guidelines that were mailed to you. We have an audio system here, its equipment is more than adequate to handle this call. We've concluded that a part of the problem we have is that people are not speaking into the microphone. And these guidelines are intended, we're looking at different microphone configurations, not to prolong this, but we're looking at ways to help people speak clearly and into the microphone. Don't turn your head. Put your hands outstretched, and that's where your mouth should be, from distance from the microphone. If you can follow these simple, basic rules, don't stand back here, don't stand on top of the microphone, that's about the right distance. It will, you know, your ideas are important. If you can't communicate them to the audience, then you're standing up here and you're not accomplishing what you want to do. So if you could just follow those basic rules, I think we'll have a better experience. Thank you.
Moving on to the next article, which I understand was going to be passed over, but there's going to be some discussion on it. Agenda Item Five, which is Article 15, Police Chief Services.
Hi, good evening. Zachary Taylor, Finance Director. As the moderator just explained, this will be passed over. However, I was asked to explain it a little bit to make sure that everyone understands why. So there still will be a need... There will still be a need to have an interim police chief as we, if anyone's been paying attention to the selectman meetings, we know that one has been appointed. The reason this is being passed over is because we shouldn't be paying salaries out of an article. Instead, an article could be supplementing a budget, but we already have a police chief encumbrance embedded in Article Four, which you guys will be voting on next Monday. So it just simply didn't make any sense to move forward with it. So we're looking to pass it over. But that's the only reason why we already have the funds available in Article Four in the Police Department Personnel Services budget. No other reason.
Any questions? Let's move on to the next item, which is the sign regulation.
Good evening. Larry Duncan, Town Planner. I don't believe we have a, I don't believe we have a planning board member, so all... So Article 21 is being sponsored by the Planning Board. Because the relatively recent update of the sign regulations made no provision for projecting signs, the Planning Board's developed this amendment to provide for them in a limited way in non-residential districts. There are three parts of the signed section of the zoning bylaw are proposed for amendment. There'd be a new definition, obviously, defining what a projecting sign is. Some exemption provisions will be adjusted so that you can have some projecting signs potentially over street right-ofways. And then in those instances, they would be Planning Board special permits. In cases where signs might actually project into the right-ofway, they would later need to get a license from the Board of Selectmen.
Any questions? There are no questions, let's move on to the Agenda Item Seven, which is the Police Chief Selection Committee Expenses.
Thank you. Basically, this article seeks the sum of $50,000 for a budget for the Police Chief Selection Review Committee. I think as everyone knows, the committee was formed by the Board of Selectmen. They're tasked with developing a process and providing three to five names to the Board of Selectmen for a new police chief. The committee itself has met, I believe, three or four times. They have determined that they will need a budget in order to implement the scope of their services. What will they need the budget for? Advertising, job postings. They also will be looking to retain a consultant, a firm. That firm would do recruitment services, background investigation of candidates, possibly develop questionnaires for the Police Department and public surveys, develop applications for the individual candidates who would be applying. And then there'll be some initial screening of those candidates. When this was done some 17, 18, 19 years ago, the selectmen actually did site visits for those applicants who made the final cut. So they went to the town or the city where that applicant was a police chief, or a lieutenant, or whatever their rank was, to do interviews of public officials, the town administrator, the finance director, other police, fire personnel. So they determined, again, they will need a budget. Any other expenses, there could be others that I am not aware of because the committee is still meeting. For retrospective purposes, back in, I think, 2001, town meeting approved, I believe, $25,000 for this purpose when we hired our police chief. So they have determined, this committee, that they believe this figure of $50,000 would be adequate to accomplish what they need to accomplish.
Any questions? Yes, Chris.
Hi, I'm back again. Forgive me if you already answered this. How much has been spent so far? And is there a breakdown in terms of, you know, how much the cost of a query is and the administrative? In other words, for every candidate, are you necessarily doing a thorough background check? Are you going to wait until you have the few that you're interested in and then do that check? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes. First of all, no money has been spent. We don't have any. So that's first of all. Again, the committee itself would determine that. My understanding would be, though, if they get 50 applicants, no, they're not going to do a query or a background check. Their job is to whittle those 50 applicants to three to five names to be sent to the Board of Selectmen. I would venture to guess then, it could even be less than that, but they will vet those candidates. But again, it's up for the committee themselves, and they've only met three or four times. So I really don't want to speak for them. But no money has been spent to date.
Yes, Kate?
Is 50,000 going to be enough?
I hope so. I don't know. Again, the committee has met only three or four times. Based on some preliminary estimates for the cost of the consultant, it should be. Yes.
Any other questions? If not, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the Geriatric Authority Payment in Lieu of Taxes.
Thank you. See if I can get this right this time. So we are viewing this article as a housekeeping article. A little bit of history behind it. Back in 2009, this body had voted unanimously to pass this exact same article. Something had happened where it just didn't get submitted to the state. It would have taken effect upon its passage to the state. It didn't get sent in. I don't know why. So all's we're trying to do here is reaffirm the vote that was unanimous in 2009 and just make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is. Nothing further.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the item, Agenda Item Number Nine, which is the Liquor License Canvas and Cup LLC. After calling, Attorney.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here on behalf of Canvas and Cup. And Canvas and Cup is what is referred to as a paint and sip business. And for those of you who don't know what a paint and sip business is, that is when an artist opens up...
artist opens up an artistic instruction studio, and in that artistic instruction studio, they bring in private events, they teach people how to paint, and they also offer refreshments at the same time. This particular paint and sip studio is located at 189 Main Street. So it's right in the middle of Main Street. So it's a retail business in downtown Milford. This one is run by Masa Gavanyan. On the nights that she has events, you'll find her in there with her seven-year-old daughter. This is, this is a family-run business. They provide instruction, not only acrylic on canvas, but they also provide instruction for children. So they have pottery and other wares that children can paint. Approximately 30% of her business today are children's events, birthday parties. The other 70% of her business is a mix of corporate events and also private events. Excuse me, they're not open on a daily basis to the general public. This business is entirely by appointment. Typically, they'll host about 20 people when they have an event, and when they do have an event, what they will typically do is serve a glass of wine. That's what they like to do. Not just wine, also soft drinks, also pastries, also coffee, but they do like to serve wine as well. That's part of the business. That's part of what their demand is. Presently, when they have an event where the patrons want to consume alcoholic beverages, they have to obtain a special permit. That comes at a cost of $100. They also have to obtain a special liability, insurance policy, for the three hours that they would be serving that wine. So it's approximately $300 every time they want to have an event where adults want to come and consume one to two glasses of wine. Now, I say one to two glasses of wine because that's the limit that Masa has for all of her patrons. So one beverage is complimentary, and then they have the option to purchase an additional one. So right now, it's cost prohibitive for her to keep functioning with her business in this way, where she's constantly obtaining these special permits. And so she was hoping that she could seek the approval of the town to petition legislature for a permit to serve beer and wine on her premises so she can continue her business.
Any questions? Yes. Ladies first, Kate? Kate?
So as currently, you said that there's a limit of one to two glasses of wine per person, per adult event. In the event that a license is acquired, will that change to unlimited? Or is there, is part of this article, is there still a commitment, that there's still a limit on the amount of alcohol served per person?
Masa has no intentions to change her business plan in any way. She doesn't want to have a business where families aren't welcome and families don't feel comfortable. She consistently has her own daughter there in the business with her. So she doesn't feel comfortable serving more than one or two glasses of wine. It's not a, it's not a bar. It's, you don't, you don't go there for the purpose of socializing around alcohol. It's really socializing around artistic instruction, and an occasional glass of wine is sort of part of the experience.
Question.
Bill Hennessy, Precinct Four. I wish her all the success with her business. However, once this, if we successfully petition the state for this additional liquor license, it's always going to be available in this, in this town, right? So there will be additional, more additional liquor licenses. It seems to me every couple of years, we're petitioning the state for more liquor licenses. And once we approve this, we can't shut the door on that. We can't go back, right?
My understanding is that's a correct statement of the current...
That's a correct statement. So if we, if we keep approving liquor licenses, they're here in perpetuity, right?
Well, so I mean, I can't, I can't speak to perpetuity. What I, what I can say is that this particular liquor license would allow a local business owner to continue to run her business.
In this one instance, right. And what happens when, when she moves on? That's my only point. We're going to open this up, we're going to allow more and more liquor licenses. You know, where do we start? That's all. Thanks.
Brian?
You said that Masa does not plan to change her business plan in it. So she will not be opening to, it will not, there won't just, you can't just walk in and do a paint night on a Friday?
No, her, her business requires groups. So it's not economical for her to be open on a Friday night and hope that one or two people want to come in and receive painting instructions. So she does have limits. They're only private events, everything is scheduled.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Not, we'll move on to the next item, which is the budget.
Good evening. I'm going to have Andy put up the actual Article Four budget. It had been provided with everybody's packet, so I trust everyone has it in front of them, but I'm just going to put it up quick for some talking points. While he's doing that, I will say I'm very pleased with the outcome this year. I'm very happy with the hard work that the Finance Committee put in. There was many hours, this, the budget process, as Reno will probably tell you when we went over it, starts way back in December. We're working in three different years. We're closing out the previous year still. We're right smack dab in the middle of the current year, and we're focusing on the following year. So it's a lot of work, and I'm very happy with this particular budget. We're looking at 3.5%. Yep, that's it. Yep, perfect. Andy, can you focus a little? Oh, never mind, okay. So we're looking at 3.5%, which in comparison, last year was 4.1, year before 4.7, year before 3.8, and the year before that 4.9. So we're in pretty good shape. In 2017, with the 4.9, was when the Woodland School debt had hit the books, which was $2.8 million. So that was kind of the, the year where we made the jump. And this has been the lowest overall Article Four budget since 2013. So again, very pleased with this budget. You can see the breakdown. General government came in around 1.8, public safety 3.8, which Chief Tuohy's here tonight. He'll have an opportunity to discuss his budget. Education at 4.7. We have the, some members of the school here that'll, that'll speak to that as well. Public works at 2.5, human services at 1.1, culture and recreation 1.9. Debt service has actually dropped this year to 2.8, which is helping out with the overall increase of 3.5. And employee benefits had experienced a very stellar year as well with 3.4. Historically, we look at closer to 6% there. So that is definitely one of the big reasons it's helping out in the overall budget. Just real quickly, if anybody hears me speak, I talk a lot about goals and objectives for the year, and with this 3.5% increase, it fits very nicely to roll into October to be able to handle a lot of the capital projects and financial goals that we have for the town. So very pleased with it. If there's any individual questions, I don't know if we want to move on to a couple of presentations, but I'll be happy to field anything, and my, my team is here as well that will also help out.
Questions?
I hope everybody can hear me this time. Can I ask a question about the public safety budget? Particularly the absence of a full-fledged ambulance in the fire department? Why, historically, we've gotten away from that?
My name's Bill Tuohy, the Fire Chief, Town of Milford. We have never operated a ambulance under the jurisdiction of the fire department. When I came on back in the early 80s, there were two, sometimes three, private ambulance companies operating in town, with a hospital in town, with a paramedic service operated by the hospital. At that time, the political climate was not interested in getting involved. We tried back in the early 90s. The firefighters' union tried to develop some momentum towards getting an ambulance, but it just never succeeded. So we've always had a private ambulance. Right now, you have a community ambulance that pays the town of Milford $5,000 a month for dispatch fee, and they get the 911 work with two ALS ambulances in town.
Any other questions? There are no other questions? Want to speak?
Currently, the fire department budget is coming in this year as a 7% increase. The fire union is without a contract, so we're operating on last year's numbers. We are hiring four additional firefighters to bring the total complement of the department to 45. We haven't had any increase in staffing. We put on one last year. We put on an inspector last year. Back in the 90s, we put on a training officer, coordinator. There hasn't been any sta, any increase to the rank and file since the early 80s. Our call volume's gone up over 400%. It's a, it's a safety thing. We're just doing so many calls now, so many multiple calls, we're stretched so thin, it's time to put on some additional staffing. That's included in this budget, and it's a $242,000 increase by adding those four people into my budget.
Any other questions? I will turn it over to the School Committee, our School Superintendent, Dr. McIntyre, and Kathleen Perry, present their portion of the budget.
Hello, thank you for having us this evening. I'm Kathy Perry, the Assistant Superintendent for Business, and we're here to provide you with an overview of our 2020 budget and how it came to be. Our budget for 1920 is $50,550,350. So let me just discuss the level service delivery impact of our budget. We came in at 4.14%. And essentially, 82% of our budget is made up of our salaries. We're a service delivery for education, and that's our ultimate goal. So having said that, $1,290,843 is our salary in contract obligations. In addition to that, it does include $350,000 for out-of-district placements. And essentially, not just Milford, but across the state, we are experiencing additional placements for emotional intervention, and that's not any different across the strait. It's what we're experiencing in all districts. Our transportation increase is due to a review that we did of our current contract. We have a two-year rollover provision. And when we did our due diligence and the cost analysis, the School Committee voted to roll over the two-year carryover due to the fact that in the review, the cost per day, per route, was, out of five districts, it was the fourth lowest. So we felt confident that moving forward with the rollover was cost beneficial to our budget, and that going out for a new bid would run the risk of that number being elevated. In addition to, the last increase is the educational materials contract budget. So overall, the increase of $168,000. Essentially, what we do with our building principals is allow them a 2% of their building-based budget for increase. And that essentially is the shipping costs needed for textbooks and workbooks and other provisions that are needed as an, an increase. And again, that includes any increase for maintaining our buildings in that $168,000. Mr. Valani and I were, had a reach out from our commodity broker in January with the demand being so low for heat during the month of January, that they felt it would be best for us to go out and acquire some bids for our supplier on our gas consumption. And we were fortunate to get a very advantageous bid, which allowed, I believe, over five years, an increase of, or a decrease of over $350,000 for the town buildings, and that included the school. So that allowed a decrease in our utilities budget. And that's essentially how we get to a 4.14 increase in our level service delivery with no changes. The School Committee and the FinCom Budget Subcommittee had many meetings over the course of the winter, and we started our initiatives at well over $1 million and a half dollars from the building principals. And through negotiations with the FinCom, all of these initiatives that you see before you here, a total $398,560, which will have an impact on our local budget. Therefore, our overall budget increase is for general education at 2.74% and special ed and EL, which are two subcategories that we do budget separately at 2.23, which brings our budget ask at just over, or right about 4.9.
So we're, we're facing three challenges in the school department. One is, we're up about 5%, approximately 5% in student population this year compared to last year. And historically, the Milford Public Schools, the, the population has been kind of flat across the board. The running joke has been, we basically added one student per year since like 1960. This year, we're up about 5%, which is significant. The, the second piece, which is also driving some of the asks for special education and our English learner budgets, is that in four years, our percentage of students who are categorized as high-needs has increased by 17.7%, which, which is pretty significant. And the reason that has an impact is because particularly students with special needs and English learners require specialized instruction, which happens outside of the general education classroom. And, and the third piece is something we've been doing the last few years at the high school level, is increasing programming for students who want to enter directly into the workforce. And we're seeing somewhere between 18 and 25% of our students either going directly into the workforce or entering the workforce within a semester of, of college. And we're trying to provide programming such as hotel and hospitality, business and banking, and we added a building trades program this past year. And the building trades program was, you know, has been very successful, and we're seeing a lot of interest and requests for spots in the classroom. So we're actually expanding that programming next year to offer a second year of the program. We're also looking in the future to add programming, potentially in advanced manufacturing, biotechnology, computer science, and we're looking at automotive. And some of that programming will do directly at the high school, some of it will be accomplished through partnerships with higher education. And we're open to take questions at this point.
Actually, I have two questions, so I'll try one, and if no one else comes up, I'll step back. The first question was regarding teachers for special education and English learning. Do we end up requiring more instructors? Or are we requiring instructors, instructors with a higher level of higher degrees and therefore more expensive personnel costs?
So it's actually more, it's more instructors, both for special education and EL. Our EL population has increased pretty dramatically over the past decade, and that requires more small-group instruction, very similar to special education. There's also specialized degrees, but not, not necessarily, it's just a different pathway than other teachers.
Yes. Donna Nero, Precinct Eight. Dr. McIntyre, speaking to choice-in funding. I know part of it this year is actually going to support some of the approved initiative along with a grant, if I'm speaking correctly. The rest of the choice-in money, which it's my understanding, it's about in the $600,000 range each year. Why isn't that coming off the budget? And where, what is happening with those funds? Can you explain that, please?
I'm going to answer it, then I'm going to have Kathy maybe jump in if I don't give a complete answer. There's, there's basically three things we use the school choice-in money for. One is, one is technology, and that's teacher laptops, desktops, as well as Chromebooks. And then the second piece is professional development for our teachers as part of the contracts, with some graduate coursework, and we also use it for one-time expenses. the contracts, so it's graduate coursework, and we also use it for one-time expenses, is the third, is the third piece, with like new initiatives, which is what you spoke to in terms of the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Kate?
When you were addressing the portion of our student base that go directly into the workforce or who go into the workforce after, within a year of graduation, do we provide career planning, career training that's available to them after they have left the high school so that it's continually available to them?
So, we, we actually don't, once, once a student leaves the high school, we really don't provide additional training or coursework. What we are doing is providing a lot more programming. Milford High School, oh, go ahead, ask, maybe clarify.
I phrased that poorly. I meant outreach as far as placement, as opposed, as opposed to additional training. I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, no, that I can answer. So, we've actually, we've changed our high school schedule for next year to allow for more internship and apprenticeship opportunities, which is going to help in the placement process. I can tell you, our seniors who are enrolled in the building trades program are being recruited by a number of local construction companies and other out, similar outfits, because they're interested in the skills that they're, they're developing. For business and banking and hotel and hospitality, the majority of those students do still go to college, but we do place students in the hotel and hospitality program in our two hotel partnerships and with our travel agency partner. Business and banking is gonna be, I believe, heading into its second year this year, so we'll have our first cohort kind of going out potentially, you know, some, some of those students could go into employment or college, we're just not certain yet.
Did you also mention manufacturing?
The manufacturing program is something that we're working on, so we don't have it in place yet. But it'd be a similar model where we, we develop partnerships with, you know, private industry and corporations to kind of facilitate that job placement.
Question over here.
Hi, mate. My name's Brendan, Precinct Six. This is kind of a long question, and probably with two parts to it. In regards to the snow day program, what is that called, just, what is that?
Blizzard bag or alternative structured learning days?
Which I think is fantastic. In regards to that program, for the students that don't have access to internet at home, is there any funding in this budget to help those families acquire the necessary means to complete that work on those snow days?
Yeah, so, so, short answer is no, but what we've done is we've allowed a certain number of days for students to complete the work, and we would provide, you know, either time after school or different portions of the day if a student couldn't access the internet or Wi-Fi at home. I know a number of cable companies have different programs where they provide very low, low-cost or close to no-cost programs that we're, we've tried to promote, I think, of things like the town day that's coming up, Celebrate Milford.
Okay, yeah, and in the future, would you plan on trying to get some funding for that if necessary?
You know, it's, it's very possible. We've talked about potentially bringing hotspots in and things like that. I think we're, we're at the very early stages of just full deployment for the Chromebooks.
Sure.
And right now, we're not seeing a tremendous amount of issues, because a number of students do stay like after school at the middle school and the high school for a significant amount of time. They take advantage of the youth center or the library, which, which all offers free Wi-Fi as well, but, you know, anything's possible in the future.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Hi, Bev.
Hi, my name is Beverly Swire from Precinct Seven.
Hi, Bev.
I just had a question about the school choice number, and is there, I know that number seems to be growing. Is that a concern for you? And also, in terms of that number, do you embed in your budget an expectation for that school choice number?
So, our, in terms of trends, our school choice outnumber, I'd say, six or seven years ago went up pretty dramatically. It's actually leveled off and is starting to slightly decline. Our school choice in numbers have gone up dramatically. Our issue right now is because of the growing number of students that we have in the district, we're being a lot more conservative with bringing students in via school choice this coming year, because we're watching closely to see if this five percent jump is kind of an aberration, or it's actually like a trend that we've really gotta kind of watch. In terms of budgeting for it, we really don't budget for it, because we look at, we kind of look at the total number of students that we, we have in front of us, and we're, we're gonna be at the highest we've been in at least twenty years and, and maybe historically.
And what kind of number is the school choice number? I mean, is it currently, what is it?
The dollar is about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand annually.
And number, students?
You know what, I'd rather not answer that, because I don't have the, that particular number in front of, in front of us.
All right, thank you.
Either for in or out. I don't wanna give you inaccurate information.
Chris?
Hi, a couple of questions. One is, maybe I missed it, is there a line item here for school choice in the budget, and does that include charter schools? And then the other piece is, do charter schools impact the budget the same way as school choice? Are those the same things?
It's, it's slightly different. So, we have kind of a number of different classifications of students. We have students, which is the vast majority of students that choose to go to Milford High School, or Milford, the Milford Public Schools, and those students, we, we receive the, the chapter seventy funds kind of fully directly. We have a group of students that choice out to other public school districts. We have, and it's a relatively small number of students that go to charter schools, and there's a different formula, but it's similar to the, the choice-out kind of formula. There's a certain amount of tuition that is kind of deducted from your chapter seventy funds. There's also homeschool students, and, you know, the majority of homeschool students we're not charged for, but there are a small group of homeschool students that actually access services in the Milford Public Schools, and we have a number of students that go to private schools that, you know, we, we're not involved in tuition in or out, and we have another group of students that are receiving specialized services and special education placements that we don't have the resources to provide locally.
Okay, so that's not listed anywhere here to capture that?
It's, 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 yeah, I think, I think it's listed on, in the town budget. If not, you can send us an email, we can give you that information.
Okay, thank you.
George?
Question on how the budget is structured. When I look at the numbers, as I see them in the budget, you can't tell from the budget how the money is allocated amongst various classes of students. Is that budget available so that you could see, for example, the diversity issue as well as the special needs issue and the issue of, you know, those that require additional services? How much of the budget is consumed by those, that group, and how much is consumed by, say, I don't wanna be offensive, but like the normal kids, the average kids, and the high-achiever kids?
Yeah, so it's, it's, is it, I don't wanna cut you off, George. Is that, okay. The, I read on the DESE webpage, if you go to district profiles, it actually breaks down the budget numbers and percentages of each student by school, by grade level, and is the whole district, so you get, you get kind of a sense of that. I don't think we have it lined up necessarily, it's presented that way, but I think you can get a real sense of it if you go to the website, and if you need, if you need the link, I'm more than, like, just shoot me an email, I'm more than happy to provide it to you.
Well, the, the reason I ask is, there's so much need in the school system now, evolving over time, to meet a certain group, and yet the budget itself has not really grown dramatically in any sense. Says to me that in some way, the distribution of the budget amongst various classes of students, while one class is consuming a greater percentage of the budget, therefore, another class of student has a less, is consuming a less percentage of the budget. And that group, which is getting less and less of the budget every year because of that other issue, are they being, not harmed, but sort of short-sheated in some way?
I would say, I would say no to that, because I think we're adding programming to, to support our general ed students, so we've expanded like project lead-the-way courses, which are high engagement science courses that have, that are actually in place from grades three through twelve, that pretty much every student in the district accesses. We're adding early college courses at the high school level that, that most of our students will, will have the opportunity to access. Our AP course offerings, again, at the high school level, have expanded pretty dramatically. We've got, you know, a very robust elective menu. So, I would say, I would say no to that, that question, or that question, but I would also say that a lot of our budget requests over the last several years have disproportionately focused on like students who are categorized as high needs, because we have to kind of legally address those needs and, and provide kind of a high-quality education to every student.
Okay, thank you, Donna Nero, Precinct Eight. So, Dr. McIntyre, I know you had said that the school choice in/out was leveling off, but looking at, I don't know what number you were referring to, are you referring to the in or to the out? And with that being said, there's still a significant delta between the in and the out, meaning that there are a significant number of students choicing out as opposed to choicing in. And how is that adversely affecting the budget? What is the plan moving forward to address that issue? And going back to, I know the, the Department of Education has restructured their rating program, but the last rating that we, that, that we had was a level one, which is close to the, is a, excuse me, not a level one, a level three. So, what can we do to improve that in order to, or are there any measures being done so that the impact on the budget will be less in the future?
So, our, our high school actually in the last two years has increased their accountability status, and we've been under, I wanna say, three different accountability systems, and I'd say the last decade, as well as three different testing systems, but in the last two years, the high school has increased their standing by about seventy percent. We're seeing the school choice number from its high point out has started, is leveled off and is starting to decline. The school choice in number increased pretty dramatically, almost fifty percent, in the last, I'd say, three years. The, our issue with school choice in now is, the way school choice works is every district can choose to participate or not participate in the program. What that means is that we can, by participating in the program, we accept students in. Any student can go to any district that accepts school choice students in, but any, like, like I said, any student can go to any district that accepts school choice students in, so we can't say, hey, nobody can leave, but we can say nobody can come in. But within that, we close grade levels off, and starting this coming school year, we're already closing grades twelve, eleven, nine, and eight, just based on, based on numbers, and we're being very judicious in terms of when we're bringing students in, because this year we saw a tremendous increase in the number of students that came in during the course of the year. So, we're trying to, although, although there's a gap between in and out, we have to turn down a lot of students because we just don't have space for them in a particular grade level. And, and so, it's, it's tricky, so it's, the, the school choice out students are just a, a straight out. The in is, is a little more complicated, because we do turn, turn away a, a number of students and families, because we just can't accommodate them based on, on class sizes, which we wanna maintain.
Right, so for the upcoming school year, though, the school choice in is closed in grades ten, eleven, and twelve, you said?
Eight, nine, eleven, and twelve, but we're, we're, we're still kind of monitoring whether we're gonna open some of the grade levels, because we're watching the numbers right now. We currently have about fifty-three students in our Family Resource Center that are gonna start new to the Milford Public Schools before the end of the school year, despite the fact that we have, I think, about four weeks or five weeks left in the, in the school year.
Okay, well, two points. One is, you, going back a few years, you said that compared to a few years ago, the school choice in numbers have, have improved by fifty percent. However, going back to two thousand sixteen, the school choice in was one-oh-five, the school choice out was one-ninety-three. This current year, I have in numbers as one-nineteen and out as one-seventy-nine. So, comparing two thousand sixteen to two thousand, two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year to two thousand eighteen-nineteen, I see a difference of fourteen students, certainly not fifty percent.
So, we were, we were at eighty, and I forget what year it was, I wanna say, and again, I don't have it in front of me, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but we've, we've basically shifted, actually, the, the choice out number is a little higher, I believe, than the one-seventy-nine, and the choice in number is a little higher as well, but again, I don't have those numbers in front of me, so I don't wanna...
Okay, but looking ahead, it's been projected that the budget for school, for choicing out is going to hit that two-million-dollar mark. What is the plan to address those numbers moving forward?
So, we've been aggressively marketing our programs and opportunities within the district. There's a number of programs we put in place to kind of support student learning and growth, work with students that are struggling. I think the career programs that I talked about just a few minutes ago, I think are gonna be appealing to a number of families and students in the community. You know, we have tremendous music programs, tremendous arts programs, athletics programs, and, and we're, we're putting students in the most competitive colleges and universities in the country.
Is there a plan to determine, though, why the school, why students, why so many students are choosing out?
So, we've done a couple of studies over the past decade. We're in the process of contracting with a psychometrician team that's going to do kind of a full analysis, not just about school choice in and out, but kind of to answer the, the woman's question on this side of the room, we're also gonna look at why students make any choice other than Milford, whether it's to another public school district, to a private school, or a charter school, or homeschooling.
And what is your timeline for that, for that analysis?
I'm gonna be doing, I'm gonna be making a report probably in June to the school committee in terms of the deployment of the survey.
Okay, great, because I think the two thousand fifteen survey was deemed to be statistically insignificant due to such a small sample size? Okay, thank you.
Okay, question. We'll take the Red Sox first.
Red Sox first, good. Thank you all for putting this, this is a great event, so appreciate it. The question goes off of George's question that he asked you earlier, and I'm gonna phrase it this way. You mentioned that some of the, the increases were in a sense to meet the requirements of the population you had, and my question is, is the overall budget, and I know you negotiate your budget with the finance committee, is the overall budget where it needs to be to ensure that all students, all students get the best opportunity kind of education in Milford?
Great question. I, I, you know, I think we need to continue to, as a school committee and school department, advocate for more increases, because I think there are opportunities in, in, I think, a few areas, and I think some of it goes to opportunities at the high school level for, you know, additional science and technology classes, additional supports for struggling learners, but I'm, I'm comfortable and happy with this budget, but I'm also looking to kind of continue to increase the services and programs that are offered, to continue to support kind of the opportunities for students to ensure their kind of, to maximize their learning and growth. Did that answer your question, Jose? Okay.
Kate?
Do you, do we track the percentage of students who, after high school, go on to a secondary institution and who may not stay in that institution after the first year?
We, we do, and we were just starting to get full cohort data on that, and we've got a couple of years right now, and part of, part of the reason why we're moving more in a career, I don't wanna say more in a career, but we're trying to support career readiness for students who graduate and go directly to the workforce, as we're seeing a percentage of students that have what's called the slide. They say they're gonna go to, whether it's a four-year college or a two-year college, and actually never make it in the door for, for a variety of reasons. So, a lot of persistent rates in college are driven by family income. You know, students who come from high-income families to middle-income families tend to complete college at about a fifty-five percent rate, give or take. Students that come from, you know, low-income or economically disadvantaged families are completing college at about a twenty-five percent rate. And again, if, if you're interested in that data specifically, I'm, I'm guesstimating those numbers, they're pretty close. I can send you a table from the Department, the National Department of Education that kind of provides that information, which is, is actually pretty interesting.
Jeff?
Hi, Jeff Nero, Precinct Eight. Just a quick question, could you go into some detail of the approved initiatives? I know you said the population increased by five percent, so a couple hundred students, but the initiatives only had two teachers.
Right.
How do you cover that? How do you, it doesn't seem to cover the gap in students.
No, you're, you're absolutely right, and when we start the budget process, it's in October for the school department. At that point, we had pretty similar numbers, they were a little higher, but not significantly higher. Okay, let me get the, can you pull that page? Oh, there you go. So, do you want me just to kind of go spot for spot, Jeff? I can kind of do it quickly, or?
It's up to you, I'm just, I'm just trying to address the population versus what we approve for the initiatives. To cover that, you know, the, the ultimate goal is to get the education, and it doesn't seem like we have enough teachers to do that with the initiatives.
Yeah, so, so I'd say about a third of the initiatives up there are actually supporting class size issues or access to particular course issues, and that would be the, the grade four teacher at Woodland. That, that particular grade level, historically, for whatever reason, was one teacher below the third and fifth, and so it kind of equalizes class sizes at Woodland. The science teacher provides access to more, you know, science programming at the high school. The point-two-five early childhood teacher at the high school, we actually shifted a position to a more technology position, technology-focused classes, and we're shifting that to, the early childhood program to a point-two-five, and maybe potentially connecting it with some early college courses. The speech and language teacher also supports kind of students with special needs across the district, and we're seeing a growing population of those students with speech or language disabilities. The assistant principal and dean of students, I think, address kind of the larger student population, I think, one step removed, they're able to address issues that are happening, I think, in a more efficient and effective way, and also able to support teacher supervision and evaluation and provide kind of that good feedback to improve instruction. Our math supervisor, one of, one of our issues in terms of... Our math supervisor, one of, one of our issues in terms of MCAS is our ELA scores tend to be, you know, pretty close to the state average, a little above, a little below. Our math scores have trailed the state and we want the math supervisor in place to really focus, laser focus on, you know, just looking at programming, instruction, both vertically and horizontally, to really kind of improve the learning and growth for all students across the district. Our, I'm seeing what I'm missing, our social worker, we're seeing an increase in students who are having kind of just their basic needs met. And we have had a lot of success with an elementary social worker to get access to families, to resources in the community. And expanding that program, I think, will provide more of our students just with the basic needs so they can access the curriculum during the day. And our interpreters are actually required by federal civil rights. Whenever we have a meeting, whether it's an IEP meeting, an EL meeting, if it's a disciplinary meeting or just a meeting where the principal, you have to conduct it in the parent's home language. Thank you. Yep, no problem.
Any other questions? I know we're getting to the end of our allotted time, but.
Just real quick.
Yes.
Tom Ross, Precinct 2. You mentioned earlier that the building trades industry may have reached out to, you know, for training or having people become interested in it. Our local industry, which is medical care, has anyone from there reached out looking for a program that you folks might be engaged in in the future?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the areas we're really looking at as well. It's a growing field across the state. We have, we have a program called, I believe it's Project Search, where we have high school students that are actually at, working at Milford Hospital currently. But we definitely, with Milford Hospital in our backyard, it's a great resource and probably an untapped resource. So it's a great point.
Yes, Ms. Darin.
Evelyn Bontempo, Precinct 4. I don't have any questions. I do have a comment. It's positive, I know, moderator. This is the first time as a town meeting member that I have heard an explanation from the superintendent of schools, the business manager, what is going on with the budget, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. If there are no other questions, I think we've covered the 10 agenda items that we allotted. And I know Reno wants to say some closing words and also to remind people to complete the questionnaire that, on the forum that we had tonight.
Again, I want to thank you all for coming. We have a town meeting coming up on Monday, I hope to see all of you there and perhaps more.